Wayne'sville City Council Meeting for April 21st is now in order. Can we have invocation by Mr. Wilson? Please stand, please.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for everyone that has shown up on this evening. Every person that has given up their time to make this community better. I pray that you will, that you continue to bless us with wisdom, with knowledge, with understanding, and with patience as we continue to seek it, seek after doing the things that are going to make this community better, access in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Mr. Farn, do you please lead us in place of allegiance?
Yes, sir. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will be opening a notice of public hearing in regards to cell tower. Is there any citizen's comments? Mr. Pritchard?
Good afternoon, everyone. Keith Pritchard, 300 Highland Woods Drive, Wayne'sville, Missouri. This has been a well documented topic by all sides, I think, and I just wanted to continue to state my opposition to the cell tower to be placed in a residential subdivision. Not against the cell tower, not against the developer, not against the landowner. I'm just against a cell tower being placed in a residential subdivision. I don't believe that's consistent with quality development. It was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission where it was denied, and I believe a conditional use request is just an opportunity to go around what the planning zoning voted for. I would ask that the city consider that it is not in the best interest of the city and not to approve.
Thank you. Any other citizen comment? Is there any council comment regarding this? No council comments? No? All right. This hearing is closed.
Yes.
Davidius?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate your hearing. My name is Curtis Hall, attorney, resident for Verizon Wireless, who's the applicant for the conditionings permit request for 49. I had a PowerPoint presentation that I sent to John earlier today and was hoping that you could share a screen with me. Otherwise, I have it on my end as well. So something I can go through that with you?
So they all have a copy of it. I cannot do share screen because I don't have my email on this computer, but everybody was given a copy of it.
Are you able to share screen so I can go through it?
I could see. Is it not letting you?
Well, perhaps you ought to reopen this hearing while he gives his presentation.
That's it. Can you all see that?
No.
He has to share.
Yeah. I don't know why it won't let you, but they all have a copy of it. I printed it out.
It's going to be a little more challenging, but hopefully we can, we can get through this and everybody will be able to follow along, so to speak. So first page of our PowerPoint, you'll see what is in essence an aerial. Are you able to see the aerial with the red marker indicating the location of the facility? Are you all able to see that?
Yes.
Yes.
If someone would acknowledge that they can see it, that'd be great.
Yes.
At least they have a picture.
They can see it. See it.
Okay, I apologize. Yeah, it's a little awkward.
It's okay.
But I appreciate your patience here. And I also wanted to introduce to you Jason Rigs, who's at Fortune Wireless, who is the company that was engaged by Verizon to do the site acquisition for the facility or the proposed communication power structure that we're presenting to you tonight. I also would make reference to a packet of information that Jason submitted to you all back on March 4th. It contains quite a bit of information on sort of the history of the project or the proposed application, going over information that only submitted. It's actually been a rather long application. As you may know, I think this is, this was submitted, or the application was submitted in August of last year, so we're going on, I guess that's seven months now that it's been in the system. Also in that packet is some information about compliance with the city's zoning guidelines relative to conditional use permits, and also some information with regard to property value studies that have been conducted or done relative to communication power structures. You know, there's a couple of studies that were done more local, more local in around the St. Louis area, St. Louis County, Jefferson County, with also an article that details the property value studies that have been done more across the country, really. And that issue really relates specifically to what Mr. Pritchard mentioned earlier about locations of communication power structures in or near residential properties. This one is exactly in near residential properties, sort of on the side of the area. But, you know, that issue's been studied quite a bit by many companies over the years, and the data always, at least to my knowledge, the data is very consistent, and it's finding that communication power structures like this have almost zero impact on property values for single-family structures and joint properties. I think really that's the biggest, the biggest concern, as well as, I think, the space, the fact that you can see it. Of course, in a community, you're going to have or find structures that maybe not everybody likes to look at. There are certainly, this is the utility infrastructure, we consider to be a utility infrastructure, was used by nearly everyone. There have been services that are provided by these types of facilities are used by everyone. And I'd be surprised if somebody in the council or really who's participating in this hearing doesn't have a cellphone or operate with some use of wireless services. So we could talk about that a little bit as we go forward. I, you know, just kind of quickly, as you go through the PowerPoint, I'm going to start with really the second slide. It talks about the generation, wireless generations, that is page two or three of the PowerPoint. You know, you kind of, this wireless facilities and services have been, you know, it's now decades old and we started out with one G service and now we're moving into the five G service. So I think, again, everybody is familiar with wireless service and what has happened over the years. The technology has improved and evolved, and we are using wireless service certainly more than ever, and it's hard to really keep up with it. And to really, this facility that we're proposing to you tonight, for Verizon Wireless is to enhance their wireless service in Wayne'sville area, Blasston County, along 44 Highway, Interstate 44, Highway 17. Not as detailed in some of the information that we've provided to you, but it's really to enhance coverage and provide seamless service through the area, not just as you're traveling in vehicles, but also while you're in your homes, in your businesses, where we use our devices, our wireless devices, and not just talking about phones, smartphones, but iPads, tablets, and the like, and so forth. So all the, all the various kinds of devices that we use for, you know, to connect to wireless service. And that's what the goal is here with regards to this communication structure, is to provide enhanced wireless service to, to the areas, area here. And just some more slide information about why we're hoping to expand here and improve our service here. One thing to note, again, I spoke to the type kinds of devices that are connected to the, to the wireless networks, and you can see there at the bottom that within two short and real, really here, they're expecting approximately $31 billion in devices connected to, to wireless network. And that's to get a world kind of view of it, but just to show you how important services are, and let you know that. Quickly on the benefits to the city, this is slide, or PowerPoint, slide five. One of the things that doesn't get talked about enough, I think is important, is that is the, really the role that wireless services play, especially in the 911 services, emergency services. Almost all, all calls to 911 for emergency services, be it the police, the fire department, or wherever, it originates from a cellphone. And so it is critically important that we have great infrastructure available so that emergency services can be contacted and deliver their services in a very timely manner. And so, again, that's kind of this very important stress here, and it's not such, it's just not just, or, you know, having conversations with your friends and communicating at your office, which certainly is true, but also the very valuable role that it plays in the delivery of emergency services. Next slide, again, just kind of builds on that. We're, hopefully, you know, if I could knock on wood, that the pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic, hopefully is on the tail end. Of course, you don't know, but it has had a significant impact on all of our lives. And one, one aspect of it is the, you know, the school children, the school-based children, education, the way we can deliver educational services to, to the students and to anybody who's interested. But we had to change up how we did things in the last couple of years, you know, there's a lot of no learning. And so wireless services play a very, very important role, and it's critical. Next slide, I just want to kind of go out and show you where the location of it is. I'm now on the slide, I think it's slide, sorry, I think it's slide six or seven. Seven is the aerial view. You'll see a plump tack, the yellow plump tack, if you can see that, that's the location of the facility. And again, I just, I point out, it's not really in a residential area. It's sort of off to the side of a bunch of different uses, including some commercial businesses, there's some multifamily in the area, there is some residential, you know, to the north and to the east there, as you'll see. But one of the things that is very challenging for the wireless providers is to deploy these kinds of services where they need them, and in residential areas or where they can get to residential areas is very challenging. So we all really, you know, put them, when we locate them, we try to locate them in such a way that they aren't necessarily harmful or in the direct visual and cost and visual impact to, to single-family homes. Of course, it's almost always unavoidable to locate utility infrastructure like this, be it a water tank, or a high voltage power, or an overhead power line rather, or any other kinds of things that hang in the air. You're going to see things. And so, and there's many examples of these, these kinds of facilities across the country, really, and there's actually even some, there's another slide, if you go to slide eight, just kind of looking at where it is on the parcel, and then a profile of what that looks like. I would say to slide 11, one thing to point out is that there are these kinds of facilities, not just, you know, elsewhere, but also right, right here in Wayne'sville. And you'll see a couple of examples of other communication facilities that are within, you know, Wayne'sville's municipality, and so those are located there. Some of those are taller, some of them are about, about the same size. But again, just to point out, this is totally unique, that we have these, these kinds of facilities throughout Wayne'sville and in other areas. Again, over the, over the years, these facilities have been affecting the background, and now necessarily see them as much. But I did want to point out that there, that this is a thing that needs to change. And I guess there's just a couple more slides that, one's towards the end, slide 12, of the power package, the package that talks to property values and the importance of wireless, the availability, and having high-quality wireless servers available to you in your own home and in your business. But you can see the statistics there, and I think it's pretty telling, that 90% of U.S. households use wireless services at some time. And it's super important to, about how you use a residential property, is to have high-quality wireless services available to you. And, you know, it's, it's very important that you're choosing to where to live and whether you're going to rent, or whether you're going to buy a home, or whatever, that you, I noticed the first thing I checked when I walked into my house, or the house I was looking at to purchase, and that was whether my cellphone had good service, and that made a big difference in some way, or I was going to purchase, purchase my home, though. Last, I did just want to say that, you know, it is our intention to allow for publication of other facilities, other users, antennas, so that hopefully we can avoid the need to build additional power structures like this one, if we're going to have to have them. So we'll open up the facility for relocation for, by other companies. And then, I guess, finally, there's a couple of slides you have to talk about, some of the laws, the federal laws and state laws that regulate the placement of, and placement of wireless facilities or other structures like this, and what local jurisdictions can and can't do, and how you have legal consequences that can steer you through that. So I won't dwell on that too much, other than just to point out that it's there. And so with that, I would close, and happy to take any questions if you have, and I thank you for your time.
Any questions for the gentleman? No questions? Any additional citizens' comments since we've opened this up a second time? Citizens or council, any comments? Well, this public hearing is adjourned. Okay, consent agenda. I'd like to have a motion to accept a consent agenda as written.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Connolly, seconded? Roll call.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Corin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any citizen's comments regarding the city council meeting tonight? All right, we have a special guest presentation, Keith Olson with Enterprise Fleet Management.
So he's on, Ken, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. So he's, he's on Zoom as well, visiting the council. This is to discuss our, our fleet services within the city. Ken represents Enterprise and has been working with the city, trying to evaluate our current, our current fleet, and how updating that fleet would affect the city both financially and, and maybe even staging some of our fleet to, to get more use as we go down, you know, selecting these, these vehicles. So Ken, I'm going to pass it to you.
Wonderful. Well, thanks so much, and really appreciate you all having meetings tonight. Also wanted to thank John, Miriam, Ian, Chief, for all their time and efforts that we put into this. We've been having conversations for really the last year, and really analyzing what you're doing today, and seeing if this could be a good fit for the entity. So thank you all. So from a agenda standpoint, I thought I would run through and give you an idea of who we are, kind of role and infrastructure that we have, talk about some of the capabilities, and then the budget impact, and then answer any questions that you have in that same point. So really to start at the very free top, we are the same company as Enterprise Holdings. We're actually out of Missouri, so that's wonderful. We do hold the state contract of Missouri, but on my side, the fleet management side, what we do is we really leverage that infrastructure from operating the largest fleet in the country with our couple million rental vehicles that we have out there, to help entities like yours with small, medium-sized fleets. Our niche is really 20 to 300 vehicles, or average fine, about 30 to 50 vehicles or fleets. But we work with entities like yours to save money and bring efficiencies to play. Now, from a role standpoint, my position is really getting the partnership established. So as I mentioned, I've worked with the team over the past year to analyze, operationally, what do you do for fuel, for maintenance, for engines, telematics, heavy seller vehicles, and all those different pieces. Figure out from a financial standpoint and analyzing with, around your budget, what's the best financial structure, working through contracts, with your attorney, working, explaining to the council, et cetera, but getting the partnership off the ground as well. From there, we have local account teams. Your account team would be based out of the Kansas City region, and we would come down typically about three to four times per year, working with your team, your partners, et cetera. And we're going to help to analyze, okay, over the past 12, 12 months, what do we do from a financial standpoint, looking at those efficiencies, and then also now, whenever, from a forecasting perspective, we're really looking out 12 to 14 months these days from a vehicle meeting standpoint, and helping you to be very proactive, helping provide data around your, to provide budget numbers. And really, from, from all of this, with the infrastructure piece, we're not here to lease you vehicles or sell you vehicles. We're truly here for a relationship and a long-term partnership. So again, the target here today is looking for that relationship piece. Every entity that I partner with here in, here in Missouri, partners with us a little bit different, both from a strategy perspective and an operational perspective. So giving you a couple of examples, the city of Edmonds only uses us to acquire the vehicles, outfit the vehicles. They use our equity lease model, it's built into the analysis that we prepared, and we also sell those vehicles for them. Jackson County, Missouri, they use us for all of that, they also use us for maintenance programs. Few other entities nearby, Lake Ozer, Keenan, Timman, Harrisonville, Pleasant Hill, they use us for all those things, but they also use us for fuel, for telematics, or maintenance. And all of these different pieces that I've mentioned are very customized around your entity and what's going to be a good fit. And then over the years, as the program grows, things change, vehicles change, et cetera, we can certainly go organically from there. So getting to the budget impact piece, and as I mentioned, in the analysis that you have and that I prepared, we leveraged our equity lease. Every single entity that I partner leverages our equity lease, we do have a net lease, and it's a fun option, but in the government space, the majority use this equity lease model. And to give you an example, we just had a scenario, an F-250 pickup truck. The entity, a local entity here, ran that truck for about 14 months. Leveraged the government buying power that you all have. That truck came in right around $30,000. Over the course of 14 months, they paid $8,000, and then after 14 months, we sold that unit, and we wrote down a check for over $20,000. So from a budget perspective, that is a $0 budget. We brought in the next vehicle, transferred some equipment, new vehicle, and their budget stays consistently low, and then their operating expenses with fuel, with maintenance, et cetera, are as low as they could possibly be for that kind of vehicle class. So the reason I share this with you, that, that vehicle is going to change. We've got SUVs, we've got half-time pickups, three-quarter time pickups, a couple vans, but we're always looking, not every vehicle's going to be rotated out every single year, especially when we get to the police cars, and some of the vehicles would have the equipment. But my team is always analyzing, what's the right holding pattern, what's the lowest cost of ownership, and what's the right time to get out of these vehicles. Just to be clear, in this analysis, we're looking at historical resale rates, the market is obviously outrageous right now, very inflated, given the safety industry, which is wonderful and a great time to implement this program, but in the modeling, we have analyzed historical rates. So again, I've worked with the team to explain how we're going to acquire, sell, find, how maintenance works. You can leverage your current structure from fuel, telematics, insurance, so we've really worked through all those pieces. But wanted to come out today, just kind of give you a little high-level overview, and then answer any questions that you have. So from that standpoint, to kind of open it up, any questions that council members have.
Any questions from the council?
What timeline, if we want to order an F-250, are we looking at the time of order to time when we receive it?
Yeah, great question. So now, whenever, it's very, very important to order your vehicles at the beginning of the model year, and it's, it's part of it ever to figure out when the beginning of the model year is. So for example, the Chevy Traverse and Chevy Trailblazer just opened, so if we can order those vehicles over the next month, that is the ideal time. And I'll answer a question on the F-250 here in just a moment, but on the, on the Chevy Traverse, if I order that vehicle, we're expecting about six to nine months, six to nine months from now, that vehicle should be delivered. Then, May 26th, the Silverado half-time record, seven, one-time will open. In October, the F-150, F-250, F-350 will open. Every vehicle has its different timeline. We are seeing cancellations, we are seeing all different difficulties, if you will, with the safety industry. And I assure you that if we order these 20 vehicles, there is going to be some extended lead times, and there is going to be some cancellations. It's happening for all of our clients. But by getting more aggressive and implementing this model, when we have those cancellations, my team is there to say, hey, this vehicle's canceled, we're going to be transparent, here's what happened, now what are we doing next? Right? And you have us working with you, whether we have to go out of stock for that vehicle through our used inventory, our dealer inventory, or we have to order the next month or year and get that vehicle out. What I would tell you is we're actually going into the 23 model year, so like I mentioned, the Traverse and all the Chevy vehicles are opening up now, which is a very good time just to order your units. And then come October, November, fall, well, ramp will open in between there, and we're always there to bring that data, you know, that exists in your table. From a timeline perspective, I can't tell you what the 23 F-250 is going to bring. 12 to 18 months is what the 22 F-250 was, if you order that vehicle. I do have dealer inventory, like I mentioned, I can go get you one next week, but it's not the most cost-effective approach, if we can get, if we can order the vehicle at a more cost-effective.
John, anything else you want to add to this? No? Any council? Thank you for the presentation. No other questions? Let's move on to something a little more exciting, although saving money's always exciting, but our police officers. We have a bunch of them standing out here. There's going to be a promotion ceremony, and if, Chief, can start this out?
There's gonna be a promotion ceremony, and if, Chief, you can start this out.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming here today. Today's a celebration. There's two times when a police officer gets pinned. His first appointment, and in the future, as he gets promoted. This is an opportunity for the family to celebrate both his decision in being a police officer and his accomplishments. So today, this is going to be a pinning ceremony, as they've already been promoted officially. This is an opportunity for the family to take part in that promotion. First up, I'd like to call Officer Michael Ruse. Would you please step up? Officer Ruse has joined us in 2013, when he first became a police officer. He's served at various duties. Mike has done a great job for us. I look forward to seeing Mike in his future someday. I'm just a few decades older than him, but I hope I'm around long enough to see him become chief someday. Ruse has served as a patrolman, he served as a field training officer, and we greatly appreciate him. At this time, Ruse, could you step over here, sir?
Of course.
Should we get your family? At this time, I'd like to ask his family to come up. And I want to ask the family who is gonna pin. Congratulations, Officer Ruse. Next up, I'd like to call up Officer Kyle Prock. Kyle Prock has joined the department in 2011. He does a fantastic job for us. He handles some of our instructions from our field training. He also instructs our DWI. He is instrumental in our department. We greatly appreciate him. At this time, I'd like to invite his family to come up.
Congratulations, Prock.
Breathe, breathe. Next, I'd like to call up Sergeant Hazel. Sergeant Hazel started here in 2010. He started as a patrol officer. He quickly moved on to our canine handler. He's been instrumental throughout the county, throughout the region, single-handedly getting called routinely to handle things that he is uniquely qualified for. He recently has been promoted to the sergeant position, and he's already done a great job for us. We're extraordinarily grateful to have him here. And at this time, I would like to ask for his family to step up, or whomever would want to step up.
Chief, quick question. Does he partner get promoted also?
Technically? Congratulations.
Sergeant Hazel.
It's a pleasure to say that. Thank you.
Last but not least, we have now Lieutenant Mark Piddles. Mark came to us in 2015. We stole him from the sheriff's department. He came straight over as a sergeant and has since worn many hats. He's handled everything from training to evidence, to our detective work, to supervising patrol. And we're grateful to have you here today, and we're grateful to promote you lieutenant. Very appreciative of you. At this time, I ask if you have anyone who would like to come up.
If anybody's wondering why I spend so much time talking to each one of these officers, since I've been here for almost 21 years, the police department has always been a favorite spot of mine. I like everyone of those officers from the day I came to town until tonight. Thank you very much for all you've done for the city. And you're welcome to stay if you like. Okay, Awards Commission to Liaisonate Courts, Park Board.
Well, I kinda hate to follow that. We met last week on the April 14th. We called order at 6 o'clock. And for the first time in a few months since January, we had a forum. So we're thankful for that. It was Randy Brown's first meeting as a member. It was Mr. Curtis' last meeting with us. We hate to see him go. He's been very helpful to us. The WSR sports program is preparing for baseball and softball season and have a total registration of 348. They're gonna be busy. They're really begging for coaches. If anybody knows somebody that would like to coach, the little guy who went baseball, T-ball, and things like that, they sure appreciate it. The Parks Department has started their seasonal grass cutting, which is always a big thing every year. The city will be planting 62 trees in our parks. So we're kind of excited about that. In Laughlin Park, we're looking into replacing or repairing concrete picnic tables, or at least, you know, two, a couple of them or so. There's erosion problems around trees and light poles in Laughlin Park. We already kind of taken care of that problem, because Trey said he could get some larger rock and put there, so we're good there. And we need a sign that tells the park rules attached to the Laughlin sign by the restrooms. And our next scheduled meeting is May 12th at 6 o'clock. We adjourn at 6:45.
I've got a question. How have we been doing on our restrooms as far as vandalism? Has that been pretty well covered?
Well, we talk about it a lot. It seems like it's impossible to stop the vandalism that goes on there, I guess. But it's been powder washed and taken care of as much as possible. If it still needs it, we'll talk about it again.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
You did a good job.
All right.
Okay, we do have an appointment for Renee Brown to the Park Board. First question I have is, who has made this appointment for Renee Brown?
Her name was given to us.
Who made the appointment?
Nobody's made the appointment yet. This is a proposal is all.
Okay. I certainly wasn't consulted on this.
I just filled out the letter.
All right, there's an appointment for Renee Brown. I have a motion to accept this appointment.
I like that motion.
Show of hands. Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning met April 12th. Meeting was called to order at 5:30. Quorum was present. The agenda was amended to table the preliminary and final plats of Phase III Pinnacle at the summit. Meeting minutes were approved. Public hearing was opened at 5:32. It was considering a conditional use permit at 815 Thornton Street for Airbnb. There was a resident Connie Faery at 817 Thornton Street to actually speak with the Planning and Zoning Commission. She was speaking favorably of the idea for this Airbnb at that location. So, that went well. There was some discussion on the process of Airbnb, but the process for an Airbnb is no different than any conditional use permit. That was discussed. Conditional use permit covers a wide range of uses and doesn't just focus on, you know, one item or another. So we had that discussion. There was a public notice. They were discussing really the timing of it and how long it took, but there were some things that we had to get in order. And after discussing that, you know, you get your conditional use permit. We have to advertise that for 15 days, so there is some timing. And then if you missed the meeting, which she did, she just had missed the previous month's meeting, you fall into the next month's meeting. But after discussion, a motion was made, seconded, and passed to approve the Airbnb permit. No further comments. The public hearing was closed at 5:42, and the next meeting is scheduled for May 10th at 5:30. You have a proposed ordinance?
Yep. House Bill 2022-9.
Can I ask you a question about the Airbnb? Once they're approved for an Airbnb, do you notify the predecessor's office to change the tax rate on that from residential property to commercial?
That is, that is part of the process, and the taxing of that, of that stay reflects to the city as well. So yes.
Start of.
Nope.
Sorry, man. That's all right.
Do we have a motion for that, or did you discuss it?
So we have, we have Bill Number 2022-09, proposed ordinance. Now, this ordinance was not, or this conditional use was not discussed at that particular meeting. It had been discussed, this is, we've discussed this since October. This is your, so I don't wanna have any confusion up there with you guys. We're not talking about the Airbnb here. We are actually looking at the telecommunications tower at Veeran Lane, which we had the, another public, this, at this meeting. So, public hearing at this meeting, so we just finished that. And I think we have all heard, both sides, you guys are probably pretty familiar with it. I don't know, can't imagine there'd be questions, but if there are.
Is there a motion for this ordinance? Mr. Connolly?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Wilson, roll call.
Councilman Corrin?
No.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
No.
Councilman Wilson?
She's got a reading.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I haven't read this.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Let's start again. Did you read that ordinance, please?
Yes. First reading, an ordinance granting approval for a conditional use permit for a telecommunications tower to be located at 107 Veeran Lane, Waynesville, Missouri, fixing an effective date. The second reading, 2022-09, an ordinance granting approval for a conditional use permit for a telecommunications tower to be located at 107 Veeran Lane, Waynesville, Missouri, fixing an effective date.
Okay, now we've had a motion and second, a roll call, please.
Councilman Corrin?
No.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
No.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
No.
Thank you.
That ordinance fails?
No, we got one, two, three, we got four, three, action passes.
Oh, it does?
Yes.
You see it?
I got Liberty, Wilson, Connolly, never mind. Sorry, yeah, tied.
Thought we had three noes.
It's tied up.
Three noes, three yeses at the first, you know.
Okay, no.
Thank you. Motion that, or motion does not pass.
Okay, we have some appointments. Jeremiah Nichols, Robert Hired, Renee Brown, to Planning and Zoning. Same question we asked, who authorized these appointments?
I was given these names, and I filled out the letters, because we have not had these seats filled for several months now. I believe we have any problems with quorums.
We have a serious problem with quorums, especially in this committee, because at quorum, there are nine on the committee. Five's a quorum, we only had six. So it's not uncommon for two people not to be able to be there, and we're needing to, we're needing volunteers, like you say, every, every meeting. You ask for volunteers to, and we're in need of filling these positions to continue to have these meetings as a, on a regularly scheduled basis.
Okay, my next question is, since I have been censured and cannot make these appointments, who makes these appointments?
You can make the appointment.
I've been censured, I can't make those appointments.
The only thing that you're censured, that you cannot do, Mayor, is you cannot serve in a capacity on the commission, and you can't represent the city in a civic event. In other words... In other words, everything else that's
Well, then I'll reread that censure because that's not the way I understand it.
Okay, that's fine.
All right.
Yeah, until we get
Get the attorney to weigh in.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you all. It's not picking me up on the microphone. I need the question repeated, please.
Can you hear me? Hello?
I can hear, I can hear that.
Okay, the question is, was the mayor able to approve the appointment of three members to the Planning and Zoning Commission under his current censure status?
Well, with censure, the mayor did not lose really any powers per se. The censure is designed to, to put the mayor on a more corrective path for, for various behaviors, but you don't essentially lose your powers as a result of that. But mayors only have the ability to nominate. They have to be approved by the seat of council. So on, on various appointments, those typically always require the mayor putting the name up, but the council needs to approve it.
Those names were never brought up to me before this meeting tonight.
He needs you to turn on your mic, Mayor.
These names were never brought up to me prior to this meeting tonight.
Where did the names come from?
These are volunteers who, who were, we were given their names from people that's currently on the commission and, and people that would be, as people that would be interested in serving in the city as volunteers.
Yes, I received their
Can I make a motion? Can we approve them?
I don't think so. So Joe, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, so
I can hear some of that prior
Yeah, so the mayor said these names were never brought up to him and, and I'm under the impression with this that he doesn't want to approve them or send them before council.
I would have liked to have reviewed them before I make any recommendations.
He would like to have reviewed before he made any recommendations.
So I guess, so I do have to step back for just a moment. Under item six A two, it sounded like there was an appointment of Ms. Renee Brown to Park Board. I could not hear what happened with that. What happened with that?
It was approved by council.
That was approved. So is that not one of the names that we see here at six B four?
It is.
Okay, so is that unresolved?
No, it's a different position.
Oh, Park Board versus Planning and Zoning Commission, I understand. Okay. So again, typically it is the mayor that brings forward names for the particular commission. If the board, if the council doesn't agree with those, then you have to, have to keep working until you can get to a consensus on that. It's gotta be agreeable where the mayor brings forward the appointment and then the council approves it. So who is bringing forward these if the mayor did not bring them forward?
So the staff has brought them forward in the absence of the mayor, trying to continue continuity of service with the Planning and Zoning Commission as we have struggled with a quorum in that commission, as well as Park Board. You have heard, the Park Board hasn't met since January.
I, I assume then that these are either folks that are, are being asked to fill vacancies for expired terms or, I mean
Vacancies for unfilled terms for many months. These are vacancies that were never filled of people who have submitted letters resigning themselves from their board.
Okay, so everyone has a right to resign, and if that's the case, that does create a vacancy. We do have a situation where the mayor makes recommendations. They, they make the appointments, but it has to be approved by, by us, a, a majority of a, of a quorum of the council. So I guess what I'm telling you is if the mayor feels as though he needs more time to review these names, you're in a situation where you're going to need to, you know, staff and, and the mayor and the council and the mayor and all, all three of those, you know, the legs of that, that three-legged stool will have to get together to get to a place where there are names that can be, that can be both acceptable for appointment and also acceptable to council approval.
Understood.
So Mayor, are, I, I guess, I'll just ask the mayor directly. Mayor, are you not willing to put forward Mr. Nichols, Mr. Hyatt, or Ms. Brown to the Planning Commission to fill up these vacancies?
I would like to see these, the information they gave us. I have no knowledge of these people as far as what they, how they fill out a form.
Folks, I think, you know, the mayor is, is then his right and his duty as mayor to, to make the appointment. You gotta feel comfortable in a position to do that. And I understand there are, you know, some difficulties right now, but that, you know, we, we can't, we can't get outside of, of what the requirements are from that standpoint. So we need to, you know, work together and, and come up with folks that will, will work to fill these, these, these files.
And that certainly agree with me on this. I certainly would like to have this information presented to me first.
Mayor, can I make a motion that we table this appointment for tonight's meeting and revisit it at a further time?
We can revisit very soon after this. Whether it be a couple of council or perhaps John.
If we table, we have to deal with it at the end of the meeting, so we can postpone to a later date.
To May's council meeting.
So is that what you're wanting to do, is postpone the May's council?
That's what the mayor would prefer to do. She's in the driver's seat.
Okay, I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Rice, second. Roll call.
Yes, Councilman?
Yeah.
Is this to table?
Yes.
Okay, please, we're getting the microphone.
Yes, please. It's very difficult to hear.
Okay, yes, we have a motion and a second on the floor to postpone this action until the May City Council. And I'm getting ready to call the roll, okay? Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
No.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Could, could you repeat what the, for item six B two was? Because I, I couldn't hear what happened there.
The condition, who, who asked that? Who am I speaking with?
Jason.
Jason, you're asking about the conditional use permit?
Yes.
It, it failed. It did not pass.
And what was the vote?
Six-two, or, uh, four-two.
Four-two?
Four-three.
Or a four-three, yeah. The mayor tied, it was a tied vote with the mayor breaking the vote for a four-three.
Okay, and so we'll get a written, I guess, reasons for denial?
Uh, yes.
And if, you know, let me ask you, what is that reasoning for denial?
So the only reasoning we have at this point is the, the vote of the council is a four-three vote.
Three-three vote with a tie.
Right.
With a break.
The city council, yeah. It, it's, it's, it's three-three tie, but the mayor is part of the council when it's a tie and his vote is four-three.
But if it helps, ordinances are required to be passed by a majority of the full council. Since, yeah, you count it on the full council. This is an eight-member council. Therefore, it requires five affirmative votes on the final pass to govern the ordinance. And here, even though the vote was four to three, it still required five yes votes. So while the mayor did have the ability to vote because it was a tie, it doesn't change the outcome unfortunately in this circumstance just because of the way that the, the council was set up for, you know, the, the members that are present in the seat. So I guess based on the information we provided, we will need something in writing on the basis of the denial, not just that it was a four-two vote, or four-three vote, per federal and state law. Or with the, the city on that issue?
All right, standing committee reports, utility. Councilman Connolly?
We met on April fifth at three thirty P M. Councilman Wilson made the motion to approve the amendments from the previous meeting. Councilman Rice seconded. It was approved. Mr. Doyle talked to us about the proposed ordinance, admitting the municipal code regarding availability charges for natural gas. We cannot actually raise the rates for natural gas because of flex rates. We don't charge a rate. We charge an availability and we charge whatever gas cost. And so we have a, a ordinance for your refusal shortly for raising its Not close enough, okay. So we have had an ordinance for your consideration to raise the availability rate to twelve dollars and twelve dollars to be effective in the June twenty twenty-two building cycle. Councilman Rice made the motion. Wilson seconded. All approved, and we have a press front end of the night. We also, Mr. Doyle also presented us a proposed ordinance restating, establishing rates for wastewater services provided by the city. Monthly rates would be effective December, December first twenty twenty-two building cycle. Minimum charge would go to, would be twenty dollars a month for, are using thousand gallons. Non-NID source would be thirty-eight seventy-five. Non-meter wells would also be thirty-eight seventy-five. Those folks outside the city limits, it would be fifty-two forty. And the sewer district, it would be three dollars and nine cents per, by, by thousand, um, yeah, by thousand gallons. Councilman Rice made the motion. Wilson seconded. All approved, and you have
This is Joe Auger. Isn't it possible, please, to speak into the microphone? I cannot hear a thing you just are doing right now.
I'm sorry.
Please hold your seat, Paul.
I'm speaking at five. Close it. How close can I get? The Water, Water and Sewer Department is working. Water and Sewer Department, Mr. Eldery stated his, his department had nineteen water work orders and installed eight new services. Eight new services, changed four meters, repaired one water leak, three sewer work orders, and jetted one line. They replaced the water well number four and Ozark applicators have completed our annual tower inspections. Mr. York stated that his Natural Gas Department has been installing new services in the Summit subdivision, extending the main line to homes and T B double's a year in checks walking along. Mr. Sheldon stated that his department had one power outage, eight street lights, one tree, five missile landers, eight new services, and one meter test for the month of March. A few major highlights included the ability to fight off the rain and work in Summit subdivision. They raided one transformer and meter base on Alice, installed another meter base on Alice, extended conduit behind Level Six to the edge of Mesa and between Mesa and the base of the vista. And across the vista, they were assisted by Mr. York from the Gas Department. They had two new employees that were hired in March. B and N has been tuning certain the right of ways. The crew came in Sunday, on Sunday to provide a bit of slight electrical outage here at City Hall. Two crew came in to take good care of it. We have been recognized, or, or the city has been recognized for being the top twenty-five percent quartile of utilities for system average interruption. We have less hot, we have less interruptions than seventy-five percent of the other cities in our, I would assume that's in, in our population base. There was a new closed session. Went into closed session, came out at three fifty. Next meeting, we charted four fifty-five. The next meeting is on the fifth. And we have two ordinances, one for sewer and natural gas.
Any questions for Mr. Connolly? House Bill twenty twenty-one dash eleven, reading, please.
First, first reading, an ordinance admitting municipal code regarding availability charges for natural gas services provided by the city of Waynesville, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance admitting municipal code regarding availability charges for natural gas services provided by the city of Waynesville, fixing an effective date.
Do I have a motion? Motion, Mr. Connolly. Second. Mr. Wilson? Discussion. Roll call vote?
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty? Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes. House Bill twenty twenty-two dash twelve, reading, please.
I need to speak up at this time. I have a question. Was there a public hearing on the increase in sewer rates for this matter?
No.
Okay, so for sewer rates, you must do a public hearing first. I did notice in the packet that these rates are not intended to increase until December of this year. You're gonna need to bring this ordinance back after you've done a public hearing on sewer rates.
That's for the party to have an attorney or to lead a session on.
Yeah, what about the last ten years?
Would that apply to the increase in rate for the sewer service?
On, on sewer rates, you do have to do a public hearing first. So I'm just letting you know on that, you need to, you need to have, have that, you know, at the beginning. So my recommendation to you is postpone consideration of this ordinance until your next meeting and you need to, to do the notice and, and, and public hearing for the, the sewer rate increase.
Would that be postponed or tabled? What's the best terminology?
Postponed, tabled, just moves it from one part of a meeting to another. Postponed, moves it to the next meeting.
Okay, have a vote to postpone these two ordinances? It's Corrin? Yes, both of them.
This only pertains to the sewer, correct? The natural gas is okay?
Correct.
That's true of the sewer.
I thought you just told me it was a public hearing for the natural gas rate increase.
No, he said sewer.
Was that the first one we read?
He said sewer.
Well, then he jumped ahead. We were reading the first one.
Okay.
All right, we had a motion for twenty twenty-two dash eleven and a second.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Economic Development, Councilman Rice.
Yes, the meeting was called to order at five P M. There were no citizens' comments. The minutes were approved from March's meeting. We discussed the business spotlight program application for L M C convenience store. It's provided to the committee. Mr. Doyle discussed new advertisement opportunities for being a part of the business spotlight program to include an interview video of the selected business that will be posted on the city's Facebook page. We discussed several special events coming this summer, which the Easter egg hunt from April sixteenth already happened. The Run to Sun, April seventeenth, the fiftieth anniversary of Rubidoo Park, that's a big one, and June fourth. Big Bam, June fifteenth, another big one, the Battle Cry Community Gospel Explosion Event, June eighteenth. Then the car show, the K State Cruisers, June twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Then we have Movies in the Park on June twenty-fourth, July twenty-second, and August fifth. Then the Old Settlers Day will be back on July thirtieth and thirty-first. We have a new one, the Route sixty-six Hogs and Frogs, on September twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. Then later in the year, we have the Leap Frog Five-K Frog Hill Half Marathon, it's on September thirtieth. Then we have the Tadpole Ten-K on October first. In other business, we discussed the signage on city property. Mr. Doug Potts stated that there will be a V-style sign for advertisement purposes for the city of Waynesville placed off I forty-four near the water tower. We also discussed a newsletter that's gonna be provided, will be provided to the committee. It will go out quarterly with the utility bills, it will contain committee contacts, events, business spotlight, and other essential information. There was a need for closed session, the committee entered at five sixteen P M. Committee returned to open session at five fifty-seven P M. And open session, a motion was made to approve a one-time authorization for Randy Beck to show the spec building. Motion was seconded and approved. Having no further business, the meeting adjourned to five fifty-eight. The next meeting will be held on May third at five P M.
Any questions for Mr. Rice? I have one, what size is that sign going to be?
Who, Doug?
Ten by twenty-four. I have to answer that, it's a two ten by twenty-foot signs. An V shape facing left and right, or either east and west, on top of G W lane, visible from about a quarter mile, quarter mile in each direction from Highway forty-four.
Okay.
And that sign is an approved MoDOT sign. It was an application that was.
And what does the cost could be of that sign?
I'm actually working on that as of today.
Okay. What was the results from Randy Brown showing the spec bill?
Haven't received the results yet back. I'm not sure, he just probably showed it this week. We were preapproving so he could get the, get the showing scheduled.
Have we anything inside that to kind of straighten it out, with the stuff falling out?
Hmm, to some extent, but it sounds like outside's working against this again.
Police Committee, Councilman Wilson.
Okay, on the April fourteenth was the last emergency service and police committee. There was a quorum, we did not have any visitors or visitor comments. The minutes were approved and, uh, as published. We received some grant updates from Chief Cordova. He stated that the police department was approved for grants that amounted over seven thousand dollars to purchase radios and three wireless mics last March, on March twenty-first. Radios and mics have been received, also applied for a twenty twenty-two grant that will provide additional six wireless mics for usage and have been received. Also applied for, oh, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two grant which will provide an additional six mics. All right, so I repeated that twice. The police department updates, Chief Cordova stated that all officers are now certified to use the refurbished tasers that were purchased this year, this year. We also discussed all of the special events that the economic development has already briefed. Other business, Chief Cordova discussed the quarterly statistics he had printed out and brought to us, which reflected twenty twenty-two first quarter was a hundred and twenty-eight incidents compared to a hundred and thirty-eight incidents in twenty twenty-one. Citations for twenty twenty-one first quarter was nine hundred and fourteen traffic stops and already over four hundred more than that of twenty twenty-two the first quarter. So they've been pretty busy. This was, there was a need for a closed session, the committee entered closed session at three fifty-four P M. Committee returned at three fifty-seven. Having no further business, the meeting adjourned at three forty-eight. The next meeting is scheduled for May twelfth at three thirty P M. Subject to your question.
Any questions? Roads and Grounds, Councilman Farnum.
Roads and Grounds now on April seventh at five P M. We had a quorum, there was no citizens' comments after the meeting was called over. We approved the minutes from the March third meeting. The city ground roads, Mr. Doyle stated he had requests for a list of ground roads, which I mean, I had asked that, I do believe. It's been my feeling that we need to get rid of those over, over time. I mean, we can't just rush out there and do them all, but most people's lived with ground for a long time. Certain roads, I don't think we could fix the ground with asphalt, such as going to the spring since it floods. Resurfacing this for this year. We went over the roads that we discussed on the previous years, and we had quotes for roads from Lillard Asphalt. I asked which needed the most attention from Jason Chapman, said hospital road, second street, and bluff circle. And I noticed today that they did bluff circle asphalt, but I have gone up to see if they did house the road, you know, if they did.
They were headed there today to do.
I saw them doing bluff circle.
Bluff circle and second street, yeah.
Okay. Also on our list that we have that's taken attention is roads that are in Oak Farm Estates, plus our municipal parking lot, and I noticed our crew has been fixing one entrance. Are they going to do any more work at the entrance where it gets asphalt from the parking lot?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I heard the rain pouring down, so it'll probably wash out what they've done so far.
Right, right.
We had a project update from Mr. Doyle on storm drains and storm blocks on Allen Street. He provided his pictures, same with Summit Pass, we had pictures reviewed. The street department updates, Mr. Chapman stated the street department's been busy working at Penna and Summit on its appearance of the pictures, they've been hauling rock and dirt. They sent the street sweeper off, they have maintenance working on it, and getting pricey on oiling of some of the streets in the city to fill the cracks. Other business, Mr. Doyle informed us about a pothole on Sweetburg Road on the new pavement. Said there's also another location on Sweetburg, here at Hill, that they're getting very capacitive, requiring closing of the road. Also, utility cut on Old H Highway where they had to repair a water line has been addressed and fixed. We also had a need for a closed session, we ended closed session at five forty-four. We came out closed session at six oh four, having no further business, we adjourned at six oh four. Next meeting is scheduled for May fifth, twenty twenty-two, at five P M.
Any questions for Mr. Farnum? Finance and Human Resources Committee, Councilman Davis. Not here, who'd like to give that?
I'll do that since Cecil isn't here. So our meeting was called to order at five o'clock on April fourteenth. We watched a presentation from Kenneth Olson on the Enterprise Fleet Management. We approved minutes, reviewed and approved paying of our bills. We did put the return check policy into writing, we had already had a policy, it was not officially written, so we adopted the official return check policy. A security bank payoff was approved by us to pay off the twenty twenty Peterbilt dump truck at a cost of sixty-two thousand. We have current job openings, administrative assistant one, front reception, administrative assistant two, building and public works, seasonal labor in parks, hoping to hire five people, public works technician one for the street department, and meter reader one. So if you're looking for a position, the city needs you. We discussed Employee Appreciation Day, which will be held on June seventeenth, and the invitation was extended to everyone here on City Council to attend that as well.
That'll be at the Farmer's Market or be up here at City Hall?
That will be at the Ozark Technical Community Commission. We discussed the letter outlining the censure requirements that had been done at the special meeting. That letter went to Mayor Brown detailing the outer comprehensive plan needing to be submitted to us by April thirtieth, which is thirty days from the city council meeting that began the censure. Committee will review that on May twelfth, and if we approve that, then the Human Resource Committee will bring that to City Council in May. Michelle Brown stated that Lover Municipal Law was advised that the mayor must continue to receive his three hundred dollar monthly payment during the censure. And we discussed whether or not the mayor pro temp would also receive pay for taking on the mayor's duties. After discussion, the committee agreed not to compensate the mayor pro temp during the censure and that we would continue making payments for any expenses that he was out of pocket on. We discussed the blue police badges. The city of Waynesville officers, if you're seeing any of them, they have blue police badges. Each officer paid for that out of their own pocket to support autism awareness. And Back the Blue is May first through the seventh. The city will be participating in the Back the Blue Week by highlighting our officers and their service on our Facebook page. Many of our officers will be attending the Back the Blue event hosted by County Prosecutor Kevin Hillman in the park. So be watching for that. We voted to go into closed session, we returned from closed session and brought forth the Enterprise Fleet Management lease agreement and maintenance agreement to come, you know, to City Council for final approval.
Any questions? One question, when did I expect to receive this letter?
It should be anytime, Mayor, it is sent certified.
No, I haven't got it yet.
Just like I said, it should be anytime, it is sent certified.
Okay, we have a proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, reading please.
First reading, ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or city administrator to execute a fleet services agreement between the city of Waynesville, Missouri, and Enterprise F and Trust, fixing and effective date. Second reading, ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or city administrator to execute a fleet services agreement between the city of Waynesville, Missouri, and Enterprise F and Trust, fixing and effective date.
Do I have a motion for this ordinance? Mr. Connolly, last second, Ms. Corrin, discussion?
Question. Is there an ending date if we agree to this, or is it a cold end?
The, the out clause is when you discontinue the relationship with the fleet services program and, and enterprise. So say, say you wanna, you know, you wanna be done. You actually have to plan ahead because as you return those vehicles back into that fleet services program, you, you would hopefully have a plan already engaged to replace those vehicles, whether you guys decide to, you know, in the future to purchase the vehicles or whatever, maybe change providers, to turn in those vehicles. So there's no obligation to, let's say, there's no obligation to have ten vehicles. Maybe, maybe we need twelve, maybe we need eight, but this is a dynamic agreement. It's not just set on a certain amount of vehicles for a certain time in perpetuity. Maybe you decide.
Well, what I was getting is if we agree to it tonight, how do we get out of it? We change our mind four or five years down the road when everything gets back to normal supposedly with prices and availabilities?
So, so to terminate this.
It appears that in the full maintenance agreement with Senator Black Price on the fleet management, you look at section three of the contract, there is a, you can, I believe, it looks to me like there's sixty days prior with the notice for termination.
That's why I tried to get it, you know. That's what he just said.
Are we ready for a vote?
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Councilman Liberty.
Councilman Liberty? I can see him saying yes, does that count?
Clarence, can you hear us? It should be on your top right-hand corner to unmute yourself, or in your bottom left-hand corner. It'll look like a little microphone, and you just need to click that.
It doesn't show that he's muted, I, it looks like he put some headphones on, and I might be pecking it.
Oh, okay, I'm showing you're unmuted on your phone, Clarence.
Maybe if you unplugged those headphones you put on. And unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to see him in here, and we could see him before, but now we can't see him. Mayor, if you want to invite, going ahead to.
No, this is real call.
Call of the roll, then if we have five votes, it passes anyway.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Corrin?
It passes.
We'll, we'll have to count that one as a five-zero.
Waynesville St. Robert Joint Airport Board. Mr. Wilson? You're on my list for it, let's John, let you do it.
Yeah, I'll do it. So, meeting was called to order at three o'clock. Minutes were approved, no guests. Currently, the budget revenue was at twenty-six percent of the projected or expected budget with expenses of twenty-one percent of the expected expenses. Motion was made to approve the budget and approved. Airport manager Mike Guy stated that his fuel cells had increased, but so had the, the price of the fuel. We, we had an email from MoDOT Aviation, Amy Ludwig, and she has left her position at the MoDOT Aviation and is being replaced by Kyle LaPage. We have spoke with Kyle a few times since then and kind of weaved him into our team to discuss, you know, T B N. TAMP revisions, terminal area master plan revisions were discussed. These, these discussions included a revision of the, of the proposed terminal area master plan location. It moved it across the taxiway or the runway. Burns McDonald gave an engineering update of this master plan. Terminal funding update was provided by Dorsey Newcomb, who expressed that T B N had received the nine million dollar federal funding, approved for the construction of the new terminal building. Sky West update, this is an update notifying that they. Um, Sky West update, this is an update notifying that they have delivered a ninety-day termination notice to TBN stating they will not be providing EAS service at the air- airport in Fort Wood. The discussion of transition from one EAS service provider to another, uh, was, was talked. There are twenty-nine cities currently in this situation and all twenty-nine cities are rebidding their service providers. Uh, SOP marketing reports, uh, actually showed an increase in, um, our optimization score to seventy-three point seven percent. Um, closed session to discuss contracts, basically came out of closed session and made a motion for Belair Aviation Consulting Services. This is a consulting service that the airfield has used many times when bidding EAS services at TBN. No further business, the meeting was adjourned at three thirty-three. The next meeting is Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, three o'clock in St. Robert.
Any questions for John? And we, we know who's, we're gonna try to bid with or is that still closed session?
Oh, um, currently, we have received interest from Cape Air. We've received interest from, um, I'm not sure, Contra received any interest. But when I say received interest, these are just phone calls discussing our EAS and they're starting to collect data again on, on fees and fares and, and things like that. So to say that we for sure have three bidders right now would be premature.
Well, with their percentage of UCs right now, it would have to be somebody that's gonna be bigger than-
The, the pilot, the pilot shortage is a real concern for the rebid right now. I know within the air, the, uh, airfield, just the air industry at-
Do you have a listing of passengers in planning and de-planning over the last thirty days?
Not over the last thirty days, over maybe the previous thirty we do. Um, it's not that real time for us. Um, we can maybe get some projections from them on maybe ticket sales, but most of the time we're, we are more than thirty days looking back as they put those into the-
Well, like last reading we got, what was it approximately?
Um, so the, uh, the implements kinda went down some. I'm gonna say, you know, I look at it more on a yearly target. We were probably on, on track at one point maybe to acquire the ten thousand passengers, which would, you know, give you implements of, you know, nine hundred a month, seven to nine hundred, a thousand a month, kinda in that range. But, but now we're, we have decreased, we're down to maybe half that.
So it's still gonna be three, four hundred a month?
Right. And with the altered flight schedules, um, the altered, um, maybe even some pricing, it, it may be less, it could go less. I know they've reduced a, a flight and then we have, when I say altered flight schedule, it's not, um, uh, there's a layover now in, in caterers, so it's not direct to Chicago right now, which could influence those numbers.
Any other questions for John?
I, I've got one. Have they ever done a study to see whether passengers leave Fort Wood or they go? I know that now they're going to Chicago, we catch another plane. Do they have any idea if they're going to the East Coast, the West Coast, where?
Yeah, we have a study showing some of that. Um, showing, um, not only the direction they go, but even the flight, uh, the commercial airline they may choose as that would, um, could provide interest in bidding your airport. So, yes, if you wanna swing by and, and pick, pick that up and look at it, I, I have some numbers showing you kinda, uh, final destination. Uh, we'll tell you most of the passengers probably that are, are, are in this report or study would most likely be military, but yeah, for sure.
All right, other business, we have a reappointment of Chris York with Board of Adjustments. Again, I, enough of me with Chris York, so I would like to consider at least meeting with him or discussing that before we push that appointment along.
Um, I need a motion for postponement for reelect, to reappoint.
Make motion. Mr. Rice made a motion, second?
I'll say.
Mr. Forum, second, roll call?
Councilman Corin?
No.
Councilman Connolly?
No.
He's got his headphones on, we just have him watch the-
Lawyer told me to hear him answering.
Councilman Liberty, it looks like maybe those headphones are interfering with your microphone.
I would speak.
Unplug. Probably hasn't changed his source.
We, we can hear you fine earlier, but we can't hear you now.
Unplug your headphones.
And I can tell the council, I mean, maybe this is what Councilman Corin was saying, but I couldn't hear, I don't know what your motion is, I don't know what you're voting on.
At the table, the reappointment of Chris York.
Okay, so postpone to the next meeting?
Hey, Liberty, were you using your actual phone earlier? Like you've got your iPhone, but you've got a phone call calling in and that, we muted that because you, we could hear you talking. Do you know how to unmute that?
Does he have a landline?
He, I think he might try to call again on that one.
So you vote?
Okay, Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
No.
Councilman Farnum?
So, the, this only requires a majority of the forum. It sounds to me like you had a, a motion to postpone and it failed. But you can't proceed on this item because if the mayor doesn't wanna make the appointment, then you've got nothing in front of you. So unless somebody wants to propose, somebody that the mayor wants to appoint, I would say you're at a deadlock and just by necessity, you're gonna have to roll on to the next meeting.
Am I reading this correct, this is a reappointment? It means that they currently serve-
Doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. Appointments and reappointments are the same, one and the law.
How long has Mr. York served the city?
Excuse me?
How long has Mr. York served, served the city?
Before I was here, he was at my first, uh, Board of Adjustments, he was on that. So it was prior to my two years or two and a half. Hey? It's, it's been over six, seven years.
Mr. Lover?
Yes.
Is Mr. Liberty able to attend my FaceTime on my phone?
He, so, and I, of course, I'm attending by Zoom myself. He, in order for, so, so I will note, there are a couple things you guys vote roll call on that you don't have to. Okay, so, you know, he can attend by a, just a voice call, provided that you have to understand that you cannot vote on roll call votes. The only thing you really require for a roll call vote is final passage of an ordinance. And if you are in closed session, all those votes have to be by roll call. But for example, the motion to postpone to the next meeting, uh, really any of these appointments or anything like that don't require a roll call vote, so you can just do ayes and nays. So, so I'm sorry, that was a long answer to a short question, but the answer is yes, he can participate by just a voice call because it appears to me that we don't have any further roll call votes this evening.
So basically we-
Clear as mud here.
He can vote.
He can.
He can.
He can, because we have no more roll call votes.
So he can vote?
He can vote.
Yes, he can, can vote via just a voice call.
Okay.
So get him back on with the voice. So where can he go? Is that him?
Yes, but he's, can we unmute him?
I tried. Are you there? She's trying to get him back on, so.
All I can ask is ask him to unmute, it won't let me unmute him.
Right, if it doesn't work, we'll just, he can, he can vote by voice since we don't have any more roll call votes. So follow ourselves on the speaker.
It doesn't let you. Just-
Get him the phone and we'll, we'll keep going.
Ask to unmute.
I got someone speaking. There he is.
Yeah, I just have trouble here, so. Okay, please, please on the, um, on the Zoom.
Okay.
Can you do that?
Uh, no, but, um, I can put my phone down and we can hear you through the phone, how about that?
I guess the most you can't unmute that.
No, they'll only let you ask him to unmute.
Are you there, are you, are you there, Liberty?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
I don't know what's wrong with her. She can hear you and do that.
So we got Clarence here, we're trying to, for the sake of time, move along a little bit. Um, from what I understand, Joe said is there's no need for Clarence to be up there. We can move forward, no roll call votes needed. Um, right now, we are at an impasse of, uh, reappointing a gentleman to the Board of Adjustments and not reappointing a gentleman to the Board of Adjustments. Clarence, can you hear me for sure?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. So with that being said, we are now at the reappointment of Chris York to the Board of Adjustments. Um, and there was a, uh, motion made to postpone this, seconded, and the motion failed, which brings us back to the reappointment. The reappointment and appointment need to be made by the mayor, of which I don't know we're gonna get there tonight. So, uh, but that's where we're at in, in the, um, in the, in the meeting.
And again, I would suggest to you that if the mayor didn't make the appointment, if you really don't have anything in front of you this evening, this item technically doesn't exist, uh, seven A, if the mayor didn't make the appointment, uh, because that, that's what our, that is what is required for that. So it really doesn't take any action to proceed, you can just proceed. Because again, if the mayor's not willing to make the adjustment, the appointment, then there's nothing for you off the vote. But Mayor, it does sound to me like this, Mr. or Ms. York on her, uh, on that has been on the Board of Adjustment for a long period of time. Uh, you know, and if, maybe it does make sense to, to make this appointment and it's just a continuation. It's your call.
I would like to review the, his qualifications and interest. So I'm not reappointing at this time.
All right, I think, I think you guys are, you are where you are, we're gonna proceed.
Certification of election results.
Um, you have the results of the election in front of you. Uh, all I need is a motion to approve, um, second, man of the-
Is there a motion to approve these election results?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Connolly?
I'll say.
Mr. Davis, I mean, Mr. Wilson. Roll call, is that a roll call or a ayes or an i?
Certainly.
You can just do ayes and nays on this.
Okay, do every, aye?
All in favor, please say aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And a close?
Thank you.
That's a six-zero, I believe.
Swearing in to the new council members.
Um, Councilman Rice and Councilman Connolly as well.
Hello, Edward.
Okay, everybody raise your right hand. Ayes state your name.
Aye, France.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law-
That I possess qualifications prescribed by law-
For the office of councilman-
For the office of councilman, Ward four.
Ward one.
And that I support the constitutions of the United States-
That I support the constitutions of the United States-
And the state of Missouri-
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all the laws of the state-
The provisions of all the laws of the state-
Affecting cities of the third class-
Affecting cities of the third class-
And the ordinances of the city of Waynesville.
And the ordinances of the city of Waynesville.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office-
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
And respect the confidences-
Respect the confidences.
And information-
And information.
Which comes into my possession.
Which comes into my possession.
Congratulations, Councilman.
Good boy. Do you have to sign anything? She's gotta redo this, it has Michael on there, I never sign anything, Michael, it's always France.
Get those cameras out.
It's completely up to you whether or not we take pictures since we don't have everybody tonight. And you can just phone that as you would like.
Okay, election of Mayor Pro Tem. Are there any nominations for the Ma- Mayor Pro Tem?
I make a motion, uh, to elect, uh, Sean Wilson. A nomination, yes.
I'll second that.
Oh, okay, no, we're just taking nominations, bully on, we don't have seconds on this.
Not yet.
Is there any other nominations for Mayor Pro Tem?
To nominate myself.
Sean Wilson and-
Councilman Liberty.
Councilman Liberty, any other nominations? So let's have a vote.
All those in favor of Councilman Wilson? All those in favor of Councilman Liberty, say aye.
Aye.
Sixty-two vote.
Congratulations.
Mayor Pro Tem, well.
Committee assigned us.
No, it's six, man.
Are we needed a lot?
The motion shall prove the committee list?
Do you make that motion?
Um, I make a motion that we substitute the list that I saw in the email to the current list that we have, just making substitutions of Mike Curtis and Mike France, um, for the purpose of continuity with some of our committees during a semi-term war situation. I'm providing list, everybody here.
Um, we are ready to vote on an amendment to the committees.
Okay. I need your second.
Uh, Councilman Connolly seconded.
Okay.
No, I don't like it.
Um, well, I have a motion, motion.
That's not the one I, that's not the one I presented you.
I know, but we have a motion and a second on the floor to amend. I can't do anything about that. I mean, the original was sent out to everybody. Um, this is a proposal, a new proposal. I mean, I can confer to the attorney.
So I have a question, if I may. These are, uh, these committee appointments, are these the standing committee of, standing committees of the council that are covered by section 111.020 of your city code?
Uh huh.
Okay, I'm, I'm just checking your ordinance real quick. Okay. Hey, there's quite a bit of material here. I just wanted to make sure, make sure there weren't some exceptions found in there. Uh, 111.020C says, "Members of the standing committees shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the city council and out there in the first regular meeting of the city council following the annual city election. Members of the standing committees shall continue to serve until they are removed in a manner specified or replacement members are appointed in a manner specified." So we're right back to where we've been on that, guys.
Michelle, I can't wish that.
Um, that, um, mayor, um, appoint to the approval of the council, so. I guess we're at a standstill.
So if the mayor made appointments, if the council doesn't approve of those appointments, then you essentially either you, there's no motion and second, it doesn't come forward, or you, you do a motion and a second and you vote it down, or obviously you could do a motion and a second and approve it as, as submitted by the mayor.
So do we call for a motion to approve? Is that, what about what's on the floor? Is that?
Well, the, the, the problem with that is, is it's not what the mayor brought forward as an appointment, correct? It's, it's a substitute.
Yes.
Your, your ordinance is pretty clear. It's appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council. So you have to have the mayor bring it forward, just like on the other ones.
So we need a vote on that, correct?
Right, or, I mean, so it would take a motion and a second to, to hold a vote on it. If nobody makes a motion, then we're kind of same place we were with some other stuff tonight, if the mayor said he wasn't bringing it forward and, you know, it's almost identical to the situation we'd be had with, uh, the Board of Adjustment appointment, where mayor wasn't willing to make the appointment and there was nothing, you know, before the vote. Here, your mayor made appointments. If you guys want to approve it, you either make a motion in a second to vote on it, or you, you just.
The one I sent you is one I recommend.
Not the one you made a motion or asked for motion on.
Well, does everybody have the one I, because they've got this one here, don't they?
It was sent. Um, well, everybody but Mike France because he wasn't signing it.
I can show mine.
Mike, let me put you back on utilities.
Well, you got me back on utilities?
Mm-hmm.
And what else? Anything?
And, uh, well, I had you on roads and grounds too, I thought.
Roads and grounds? Utilities, stuff that the original had me as, or what?
Yes.
So what do you gotta do?
Motion and a second to.
A motion and a second on the list that he put forth? I'll make a motion.
Does France make a motion? Is there a second on that?
Second.
Mr. Farlam seconds it? Is this a yea or nay, or is it a roll call?
It, it would be a yea or nay. I don't know what the motion is, but it would, you know, if I can, I know where we're at, and it would be a yea.
Now, Michelle, what's this on?
This is to approve the original committee list that the mayor proposed.
Thank you.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That two?
Aye, yes.
Three? All those opposed?
Opposed.
One, two, three. What was that, Clarence?
Aye, opposed.
Three to four. So then it wasn't a vote. So what, what do we do from here?
So at this point, it sounds like the motion failed. Do we add a council member with that, that swearing in? Is that why we have seven now?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, so three, four, the motion fails, which means you, you don't have the committee appointments. So, I mean, to some extent, if there are still individuals who are serving on the council, because their replacement has not been reappointed at this point, they will continue in that role until they're replaced. To the extent that, for example, if you had someone that was not reelected and they're no longer on the council, then that is a vacancy for that, that council, that committee appointment. So you guys can get it straightened out.
So are you saying that Councilman France does not serve by committee?
I don't do anything. I'm not running committees.
Is, is, and, and I, I apologize. I just don't know. Is Councilman France new?
Yes.
Okay. Didn't serve before. So right now, if, if you guys did not, if you voted down the mayor's appointments and assuming that Councilman France was on that somewhere, then that's correct. Currently, Councilman France is unassigned to a committee and you guys are going to have to work through this. Like it has to happen. Whether you can reach some common ground in the next meeting, is you can reach some common ground and call a special meeting just to do these appointments, you're gonna have to figure it out at all.
Do we postpone this as well, or?
Well, this, this one failed. There's nothing, I mean, you're, I mean, it failed at this point. Unless the mayor wants to make a different appointment this evening to vote on, then, then, then it's essentially the same as the situation with the Board of Adjustments and you just have to move on because you're at an impasse.
I guess I should say, when, when do we bring this back?
Once you come to an agreement.
So.
Okay.
You all, so again, so you have regularly scheduled meetings. So if you don't schedule something that's a special meeting in between, then, then it just, we can put it back on the agenda for the next meeting. My, my high recommendation is that you all work together to get it figured out, okay? And if you can get it figured out sooner, my recommendation to you would be call a special meeting, you have, you know, follow the sunshine laws, give these 24 hours notice, you know, you know, available for the public to attend and, 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 and observe, uh, all of the normal traffic is of, of that, you know, but that, at least that way, you don't have to wait another month to get to a point where you can, you know, get your operations, you know, moving continuously.
I recommend we have a special meeting on Monday. I don't know if you take recommendations, but we can do something.
I may have to check real quick what your rules are on setting special meetings. I, I don't know them off the top of my head. And, Madam Clark, if you know, help me out here, please.
I do believe the mayor or council can call for a special meeting.
Just gotta publicize it. 24 hours, right?
I've got a special meeting next Friday. You have plenty of time to get it, it's the public.
I'll be in Jeff City on Friday.
Not that my attendance is needed.
Sean, did you make a motion?
Um, I don't know if that was in order.
Oh.
I, I just made a recommendation to throw something out there.
So I, I apologize for interrupting. Uh, 110.250A of your city code says, "Special meetings of the city council shall be held only if the call of the mayor or the mayor pro temp of the city council, if there is at that time a vacancy in the office of mayor or have a call of any three members of the city council." So just, I just need at least three of you to make that recommendation. You know, we basically like move to do this, to do the, to set the meeting time, and then I need essentially two seconds, if that makes sense, or a, the second and a third, if that's maybe more appropriate. I don't know.
I moved that we have a, a meeting on Monday at 3:00 PM here, CNO.
Do I get a second?
I'll be in, I have hospital at 2:00, that afternoon.
So your time needs to be adjusted?
Well, Ed won't be available, he said.
Okay. Wednesday.
If, if the date is approved, if someone's having a hard time with the time, the person who made the motion could amend the motion, change the time.
I know it. The date and the time seems to be a conflict. Um, a joint consensus, will we say Wednesday at 5:00 PM?
I agree with you.
I'll make, I'll make a second for Wednesday at 5:00, for a special meeting.
I'll be the third.
Thank you.
You're what?
Um, we are holding a special meeting on Monday at 5:00.
Wednesday.
Wednesday at 5:00.
Is this the 27th of, of April?
Yes.
That was 5:00 PM?
Yes.
Now, you just need some, if there's a motion, then we need two, two other council members to agree to that, and then you can, then, once that has occurred, then you can have a vote on it.
It's a curse.
We've got.
Actually, no. Actually, you get just two other council members to concur, then it's set under your ordinance.
We have Councilman Corin seconded and Councilman Arne, Arne McGinn III.
Okay. So with that, you have the call of any three members of the city council pursuant to 110.250A. So at this point, the staff needs to facilitate that by providing the notices and agenda and so forth. If I understand correctly, that's for the purpose of making all of the appointments that weren't made this evening, correct?
No.
No.
That's for committee appointments only.
Just committee appointments. Okay, thank you. Would you all want to leave the door open to other appointments if the mayor is going to make the, uh, nomination or to the, make the appointment?
I say yes.
I, I would second that. If that's what we gotta do, I would second his recommendation that the mayor be given the opportunity to do those appointments that we have postponed at that same timeframe.
So we have a motion and a second for that?
When you show hands.
Or a roll call? Um, Sean's made a, a motion that, uh, the mayor be given the opportunity to also recommend the appointments or recommend appointments on Monday along with the committee appointments?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
The other.
Do you think the other appointment tells?
Yes.
That's, that's a simple voice vote, uh, on that. You're just essentially directing staff, um, as to what to put in the notice. And so you can, you know, that way, I mean, the agenda can list it all. I mean, frankly, you all can get to the meeting and do the same thing you did tonight with this stuff. I mean, but at least having it on the agenda gives you the opportunity to resolve it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four.
Aye.
Did you say aye, Clarence?
Yes.
No.
One no, so.
Is that a six one?
Yes.
City administrators report.
Moving right along. So, um.
Okay.
Going through some of the, the report, uh, talk about roadway repair, pothole maintenance. This is the absolute time of the year that we have, um, noticeable potholes forming in our streets or highly traveled roadways. Um, no different this year than any previous year. We, we do work through those. We're working on those. The timing of, you know, reviving and, and fixing certain streets are, uh, based upon construction schedules, other schedules. We've, we've got a master plan within the city. Um, but, but to go through this list, you guys have seen, I will, I would like to say, uh, something, the upcoming events, there's a lot of things to do in Waynesville, um, over the rest of the spring, this summer, and upcoming fall. Um, a little bit off script, maybe improv here. Um, just like your roads fail, they fail because the base is non-existent. And I can put out a brand new road on terrible base, and this rain and that traffic and the wear and tear will destroy it in less than a year. And I'm gonna ask that, again, Joe's give us some good advice from Lava. We gotta work through this. I ask come next Wednesday or Monday, depending on who you are. Um, you guys bring an open mind to that meeting. Um, I won't say this is dysfunctional, but this is, um, we've reached a point here where, you know, it's starting to affect good members of committees and boards that have served. It's starting to affect, uh, operations at City Hall, and I see good, a good base up there for a roadway. So let's get together and let's, let's get past, you know, this place and, and where we're at, and let's move forward with, um, you know, the, the future in mind. That's it.
Council comments. Start with Amanda.
Want change, lead the change. Volunteer in your community. Thanks for all the no's that stepped up. Um, hopefully we can forward with some of those volunteer appointments. Thanks, Wednesday.
Well, I would like to thank all those people who voted in all the wards and all the election. At Chain Hall, the folks that did not, who did not vote for somebody or did. The only way our system of government will continue to operate is with citizens getting out there and keeping our feet to the fire, seriously. If you don't like the job we're doing, tell us. If you don't, if you like the job we're doing, it'd be nice to hear that too.
Yeah, I wanna take something positive out of tonight, and that's the police promotions. I wanna thank Mr. Chief Court over there. Got a good staff, good things going on there. You guys are doing the job that not a lot of people wanna do, and we appreciate you very much.
Well, uh, the only reason I'm here is because no one signed up to run in Ward four. No one. We had less than nine percent of the population vote this time. I was called and asked if I would provide myself. I was called and asked if I would provide myself up for it. I did. I had previously served, in fact, I left this council one year ago at this time, after 14 years. I would tell you, I'm absolutely appalled by the conduct of council tonight. We are doing, we did no service for our citizens. None. Zero. We're here for them to make sure we take care of them. And we, you have sent you the mayor, and that's, I understand, but that should not stop us from doing the people's work. And quite honestly, I don't care to be a part of it. I'm going to tender my resignation tomorrow from the council.
I want to say, I want to say tonight that I definitely don't concur with all of the comments that have just been mentioned. I will say that I appreciate the opportunity to serve as a Mayor Pro Tem for the next year. And I will encourage others that want to serve within the community to volunteer and serve and get involved. There is a set standard of integrity that needs to be maintained. There is lines of communication that need to be opened from, from the mayor to the council as individuals. We're working here as a team. We are giving up our time in this community for free. We serve this community for free. And I think that it's owed to everyone. And I agree at this point, as a, as a person who is serving this community in many capacities, the one thing I value is my time. And when I'm working in a position or I volunteer my service, I want that time to be respected. If there's any ulterior motives or agendas that are applied, if I'm not, if I'm not asked if where I want to work in a committee, if it's not addressed to me and it's not to every person, if it's not consistent, then it's not fair. It's just a bottom line. And these things need to be openly said because it's not about...
It's been for a while, but now it appears to be muted when you're back. I don't know if you can hear this.
We're in a storm, so it's fading.
It's not, it's really about us doing the right thing, all of us, not just the council. As the council is separate from the mayor. The mayor is part of the council. We're supposed to be a team. That means that we talk. That means that we find out where people's strengths are and we appoint them to where they are and not just make appointments based off of relationships or things on that. I think that's inappropriate. Now, I don't know that to be true. I'm just making a statement based off the way that I see things. So, with that being said, I do appreciate my time and this is my second term coming in on my last year. But I encourage people to get involved with this community. If you want to see the change, we need people of character. We need people of integrity. We need people that are committed to serve and do the thing, the right thing, in private and in open. That's my statement.
Mr. French, I have none.
Councilman Liberty, do you have any comments?
Chief, you've got a great bunch of guys. It was exciting to see the motions and the family being here to enjoy it. That being said, council's here.